Good evening. Welcome to Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 21st, 2016. We welcome you to our meeting this evening. We are thrilled that you are here. If you need an agenda, one can be found on the back table as you entered. And you can follow along this evening. We do have one change to make on our agenda this evening, and that is item 5A, review of bid results for bus purchase has been removed from our agenda this evening. It will be discussed at a future date. We do have, other than that, our agenda is available for you. If you are at home and you would like to follow along, agendas can be found online on our website. That is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to agendas, and you can follow along with us this evening. This evening's meeting is rather unique. It is a committee of the whole meeting. Typically, that is when the board has a lot of discussion back and forth. This meeting is a bit unique in that the board is going to be hearing, along with you, the public, a rather extensive report from the committee that has been studying our building utilization and our enrollment for the school district, and any recommendations that are coming from that committee. Therefore, the board is not going to be having a lot of discussion back and forth on our opinions on this topic, because we are just now hearing the first vital piece of information, which is the committee report. We will be asking clarifying questions of our committee chairs, Dr. Terrell and Mr. Archibald, and perhaps our superintendent, Superintendent Oakwist. However, we are going to be primarily listening and gathering information. We anticipate this meeting to go about an hour and a half. That's our best guess. What we're going to be doing after this, as a board, is attending and paying very close attention to what the public is saying at the two public community forums, which are going to be held next week, November 29th, and the location, I'm sorry.
Riley.
Riley, I'm sorry, we've got two schools. November 29th at Riley at 7:00, and December 1st, Thursday, at Frost at 7:00. The board is going to be gathering all of this information, the information that's presented tonight, and the information, feedback from the public on these two community forum dates. And we will be beginning our public discussion about our opinions on what's being presented on our committee of the whole meetings on December 5th and December 12th. And we have an anticipated vote on recommendations on December 19th. So that's kind of what you can expect from this evening, from the board, and from the next several weeks of discussion and information gathering. So therefore, if you're typically following along with a committee of the whole, you'll see a lot of back and forth. You may not see it that level, but instead, tonight you will see a lot of information coming from the committee to the board and to the public. At this time, we have audience communications. I do not have any blue slips. Do I have any members of the audience who wish to address the board at this time? Looks like I have one. Thank you very much. We do have one member of the public who would like to participate in audience communications. If you do have thoughts on the presentation that we're all going to receive, I really do encourage you to attend the community forums on November 29th and December 1st. Our audience communications is limited to three minutes per person this evening. However, our community forum is going to be set up for an hour of discussion time in small groups with individual board members. So that is an excellent time for you to come and share your thoughts on the items that will be presented this evening. Right now, we have only one member of the audience who would like to share thoughts with the board, and that is Diane Holden. I do remind folks that audience communications is a three-minute time limit. Mr. Johnson typically times for us. If you hear a beep, you'll know that you've hit your three minutes. We have found that to be a little bit more polite way than interrupting a speaker. So, Mrs. Holden.
Two quick questions. Ann Arbor was looking at lower enrollments. They went out and they devised new programs to attract students. Just wondered if that had been considered and implemented? And the second thing is breaking up overachieving schools. Cass usually leads to all of those students going to schools, and the excellence no longer is a driving force. Things tend to go downhill when you break up overachieving schools. That's all I can say.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to turn our meeting over to Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you so much, President Burton. This evening, I think we're picking up from the mic, correct?
I'll just turn that off. You may need to turn it back on if Mrs. Oakwist is going to use it.
Thank you.
This evening, we do have a comprehensive, excuse me, to be mic'd, you're going to have to use the microphones Mr. Archibald is using. You may need to use both mics.
Sure. This evening, we will be sharing with the Board of Education and the community a detailed presentation that highlights the work that's taken place over the past 11 months. As you may recall, in December of 2015, the Board commissioned two studies to be completed for our school district. We're going to spend a little bit of time sharing with you this evening, before we begin the presentation, a little bit about the why of this work. Why did we decide to move forward with these studies? Why now, and why is this important? Then Paul Wills from Plant Moran Cressa will be sharing with you information about the studies and information, some of that will be a repeated information shared in June with the community, with the Board of Education. We'll be highlighting some updated information. And then our co-chairs, Mr. Archibald and Dr. Terrell, will be sharing more detailed information about the work of the committee and the considerations that we're bringing to the Board of Education for you to take a look at deeply over the next month. Yes?
Do we have handouts for the audience?
Yes, I apologize. We do have, thank you. So, thank you. Our cabinet team will be passing out the PowerPoint, so the community can follow along with that. So the board, you should have your copies, and I apologize, we'll get those out to folks right now as well. We thought it would be a little easier for the audience. There is some information we'll share on the PowerPoint that will be very detailed and difficult to see, even though we do have the three screens around the room. So you do have the presentation, and we will be going through each page of that in detail with you. I'd like to just first call our attention to the screen as we talk about the LPS shared vision and our collective commitments. As you know, and as the Board of Education knows, our shared vision and our collective commitments guide our work and our decisions in our school district. I took a portion of the shared vision to share with you this evening, and it has also been a guiding force for our work on the committee. This portion of our shared vision talks about organizational capability. When we take a look at that, we talk about when we pursue excellence, some of the things, some of the factors that we look at as part of our work and our shared vision is persistence, tenacity, and courageous patience. So we have taken time over the past almost year to take a deep look at this important issue. The purpose of that is to take a look at continuous improvement in all that we do, to take a look at innovative ideas when we're looking at any structural or operational changes, and then finally, to have participative problem solving and decision making. As we move on to our collective commitments that guide our work, I just want to highlight a few pieces from our practices, our communication, and our resources. These are not our collective commitments in their entirety, but there are some of the pieces that drove the committee's work throughout this process, that we collaborate in order to produce results superior to anything we could do individually. We had many voices and many perspectives in this work, and that has been extremely important. We're innovative in the pursuit of our excellence. With communication, we encourage folks to speak openly, to listen to others, and to be part of the solution. And we had to engage in open and timely communication. If we could move to the next slide? Thank you. One of the things that we've done throughout this process since last April is to be sure that we had information throughout the committee's work uploaded on our district website, including our committee meetings and board meetings where we've had discussion on this, articles that have been shared, so that we had an opportunity to be sure that the community was informed along the way. And then finally, a desire to safeguard and conserve our district resources. So I'd like to just spend a few minutes with the board and with our community talking about the why of this work. Why the studies? Why now, and why is this important? As you know, the district has experienced an enrollment shift for many years. This is not unique to Livonia. This is, we have followed very closely a statewide trend in this regard. In Livonia, we've seen an enrollment decline of over 1,600 students, approximately 10% of our student population, since the initial bond planning in 2010-11. That really, as we began to take a look at the phase work of our bond, that gave us some pause and had us ask some important questions as we move forward. As you recall, Board of Education members and district administration have rightfully asked in our planning process, will we indeed need all of our schools and all of our facilities moving forward? Before we invest millions of dollars into these schools and buildings, we don't want to renovate a school only to find that we would need to potentially close it in the foreseeable future. Bond renovations are intended to be those long-term investments. As you know, long-term facility planning is not new to Livonia. This has been a process for decades in which our district has participated. We began the bond work planning in 2011, went for the bond issue in 2013, and at those times, decisions on the bond proposal were made with all of the best information we had at that time with regard to enrollment projections, utilization, et cetera. There's only so far that we can project out accurate enrollment based on live birth data. You'll hear a little bit more about that. So as we move forward in the remaining stages of the bond, as we looked at Phase 4 and Phase 5, we wanted to be sure that we were getting detailed information. So as we move forward, we weren't making assumptions. We were looking at very accurate data and very detailed data about our district regarding enrollment and facility use. An important note that we wanted to share is that the board has been extremely diligent in budgeting appropriately throughout this process. These studies and these considerations are being made for the reasons that we've shared with you this evening, and if we decide to move forward and renovate all of our schools and all of our facilities, there are appropriate funds as allocated to do so. So this isn't a result of utilizing more bond funds and not having enough to complete our projects. We want to be sure to share that this evening. Next slide. In order, really, to be fiscally responsible with our bond funds and to be good stewards, again, we enlisted the experts at Plant Moran Cressa to help us with the two studies. And again, Mr. Wills will be sharing more information about that. As you know, this work has been done very carefully and thoughtfully over the past 11 months, starting with the two studies that took place from January through the end of March of 2016. Our committee commenced their work in April and just recently concluded. So we've had many voices, many perspectives studying this work, and tonight is our opportunity to update you and to update our community. I want to be sure that as we talk about all of the information shared this evening, we're going to share a lot of data, a lot of graphs, a lot of charts. It is not lost amongst any of us that we're talking about people. We're talking about their schools. We're talking about our children. We're talking about our staff. We're talking about our school community as a whole. We have the responsibility to bring to the Board of Education the very best information that we have, so we can plan not only for today and tomorrow, but we can plan for the future. And we know that looking at the data that we have, looking at the enrollment decline and our planning moving forward, we wanted to be sure to bring you as much information as possible, so you could move forward with confidence in your decisions. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Wills to begin his portion of the presentation.
Thank you super, Ken Oakwist. And again, the presentation's really in three parts. One is the background information relative to the enrollment demographics for Livonia Public Schools. Jen and Steve will then kind of transition to the work of the committee cabinet, update on the report of this 40-plus person committee and the work that's been done. And the third part are actually the considerations that are going to be presented, not only tonight to the board, but as President Kelly mentioned, also at the committee sessions next week. So real quickly, so we've been very fortunate to work with the district relative to enrollment projections demographics. Plant Moran Cressa, we're one of the four demographers recognized by the Department of Treasury to provide enrollment projections for school districts across the state of Michigan. Michigan and across the Midwest. Our biggest advantage is obviously we're providing independent information advice so that the Board and the community and the administration can make informed decisions relative to enrollment, relative to demographics. The map here just shows our 52 clients that we provide enrollment projections for across the state. On the next slide, we actually track not just what's happening here in Southeast Michigan, but also across the United States. On the left-hand side is actually the fertility rate, really over back to 2000. In 2012, the Pew Research has actually been tracking live births since 1920. That was the lowest birth rate on record across the United States. So, again, what does that impact to the state of Michigan? That middle chart actually shows the graph since 1940. So, the spike that you see is 1958. There's over 200,000 live births in the state of Michigan. Coincidentally, a lot of your schools were built in the 50s and 60s, probably as a direct response to that, that peak. On the far-right side, you actually see 2013-14, the state of Michigan is just over 113,000 live births. So, again, even through the good times of 1990s, the recovery, after the recession, you can obviously look at the birth rate across the state. More specifically, on the right-hand side, again, as Superintendent Okus mentioned, this is not a Livonia problem that's being addressed. It's actually throughout Southeast Michigan, really across the state. There's been about 11% decline the last five years, pretty much holistically across the K-12 sector going forward. I mentioned earlier about the enrollment projections. This just shows a graph of a lot of the districts that we work with across the state. And what's interesting is, if you take a look on the far-right side, we consider that our accuracy, our conservative approach, if you will. It's about 99% conservative or accurate. One of the things I do want to highlight is, again, Livonia's not alone. If you were to take a look at the schools up here, Bloomfield Schools, Farmington, Bloomfield Camp Court here on Rochester, Royal Oak, Utica, Wald Lake, these are all districts that have looked at their declining enrollment and really been able to address it through looking at utilization, looking at demographics, and how to reduce their overall footprint to put more program dollars back into the classrooms, not necessarily to a facility that may be 50, 60% utilized. So, again, this just shows you a level of districts that are kind of the same boat Livonia. You can kind of see the enrollments, again, just pretty much a steady decline across the board as we go forward. So, how does Plant Moran Cressa do enrollment projections? First, we take a look at, at community demographics. So, we are looking at geographical information systems, US Census Bureau, labor statistics. We are looking at everything from Nelsa Claritas or Ezra Rich's demographic software. We take a look at the pupil count. So, what's not just happened this past year, but also a semi-historical look. We even have some slides that demonstrate that going forward. We also take a look at the number of live births. And we're able to actually track what was that percentage of capture rate for Livonia Public Schools the last seven years? And historically, what would that look like? We've been, been very fortunate to actually provide some update from our projections from last year to your actual fall count, to give you some level of comfort that we're going to have some pretty accurate numbers going forward. So, at the end of the day, this is our enrollment methodology and, again, very similar to what Stanford Middle Cities Midwestern demographics would do for the district. So, again, the polygon on the right is actually the school district boundaries. So, we do our demographic report. And what's interesting is, we actually gave the demographic report to each of the 40-plus community members. So, we wanted to really drill down, not just to individual schools, but also the triads, understanding how's that impact going forward. Looking at housing starts, we're looking at vacancies, families. What's interesting, we can, we can tell you that there's 48,123 housing units in that polygon this year, of which 45,144 are actually occupied. We can tell you that there's roughly 30,075 families. But what's interesting is the families defined at 0 to 25 or 26. Of there, there's 19,000 families that actually have K through 12 kids. So, again, you look at, what is that capture rate from the private to the public? So, we're able to really look at those age groupings. Also provide the trends, not just from the district, but also from the county and the state. And one of the things we'll talk about is, what are those some initiatives that the district has done? So, school of choice, interest school of choice, et cetera. We take a look at the DS 4061 forums. Again, we look at the Department of Community Health, and we're able to come up with a five-year projection going forward. On the next slide, what this is showing is just one of the pages of an 86-page report. And what's interesting is, as I mentioned, there's roughly 19,000 families with students in that K through 12, about 87.7%, 10 public schools, roughly 12.21 in 10 of the private schools. So, again, looking at those trends, looking at breakdown to see if there's any anomalies that may, may take place going forward. Not just the primary area, which is, again, we're going to public schools, but also what's happening in West Wayne County and also the state. On slide 15, again, if you take a look on the left, this is actually since 2007 and eight. Again, we mentioned that decline in the state of Michigan, from 1.65 million students down to just over 1,480,000. Coincidentally, Livonia, which is the local school count, on the right-hand side, shows that 17,257 in '07-08, down to the 14,647, which we experienced in the '15-'16 school year. So, it varies up very closely to what's happening in the state of Michigan going forward. It's a great benchmark because, as Superintendent Okus mentioned, if you take a look at the bond in the 2010 timeframe of starting the planning, the bond passes, you know, this is why we're here today to talk about how to invest those dollars wisely, because, again, it is a 20-year-plus investment with the student counts going forward. This graph right here shows from 1990 to 2014, these are the audited live births. These come from the Michigan Department of Community Health. You can see pretty much from the 2011 to the left, that's your 12-year cohort of students. So, again, that 1,600 student loss that Superintendent Okus mentions primarily at the K4 levels, you can see that incoming K students, that's the next bar, the next five years of what we anticipate. So, we do see a leveling off. But, again, it's not to offset that 1,600 student loss that you have from your outgoing senior class, let's say, your incoming kindergarten class going forward. This chart's important because on the next slide, on the upper slides, so that those three top rows, that illustrates the birth year, the number of births, and then what was the Livonia Public Schools capture rate, which circle they kind of been read for last calendar year, 15-16. So, Livonia captured 6.45 students, or 6.45% of those eligible students in the kindergarten section. What's important about our own projections, we take a look at not just that incoming kindergarten class, but then we actually adjust it to the community demographics. So, we're looking at housing developments. .44 is the number of students per housing development. So, to offset 1,600 student loss, you'd really have to develop about 3,200 homes, just to keep you at that, that same rate of that loss of 1,600 students. So, again, this allows us to project out to the five-year time period. We are seeing, again, based on that leveling off of live births, if Livonia Public Schools continues to capture just over 6% and your cohort trends from K through 12 still hold, it'll be right around that 14,700 student range for the next five years going forward. So, having some very informative data, some very accurate data's been very helpful. The next slide, again, kind of shows the same slide, just a little more graphically. So, again, in 2009, 16,667, that dipped down to 14,418, which was this past year. And, again, just about 14,800 students for the entire district going forward for the next five years. So, that leveling off that we mentioned is pretty much illustrated here in this paragraph going forward. So, kind of a summary for the demographic and enrollment piece. So, again, in 2010-11, there's 16,250 students. This past fall count, there's 14,619. To put it in perspective, if you took your average foundation allowance times the 1,600 students, the district lost roughly $17 million of operating revenue because of those lost students over that time period. Coupled with that, in 2011, the state of Michigan also took away $470 per pupil from Livonia Schools as well as 550 other districts in the state of Michigan. So, it's a double whammy for Livonia relative to the financial operations, because we could ask a lot of times, well, what are those things that we can do to offset? Well, either generate more kids, or look at how to more efficiently operate as a district to really put, again, more program dollars in versus facilities. So, again, that difference about 10% over the last five years. The next slide, or, I'm sorry, the next part, so we actually have a projection of 14,587. We're off by roughly 39 students, which is about 99.9% accurate or conservative. So, again, pretty comfortable with the enrollment projections for last year, this year, and the next five years. Again, looking at the enrollment population, again, the 1,000 people in the next five years, yes, Livonia's growing its population, just about a 5% decrease at that 0.5, which we showed you on that slide, and that's incorporating the new housing developments. But more importantly, the median household age is actually going to go up to 53.8. So, again, that's typically, the districts that we see are well-established, like Livonia. People like living in Livonia. So, it's hard to be able to transition out a significant number of homes above and beyond real estate transactions. So, I kind of wrap up the demographic enrollment piece. The second part of our study was to take a look at each of the 30-plus, 35-plus facilities and go through and do what we'll call the facility audit. So, we walk through the classrooms. We look at every single classroom. We look at every general education-sized classroom. And the color chart, the color chart is, blue is what we consider your general education classes. I'm going to spend a little bit of time, because this is pretty important, because this is the way that we look at it from a facility audit standpoint. Support rooms are in green. These would be considered your dedicated art resource rooms, PK classes. We also look at orange, which would be your PTA-level libraries, SAC rooms, which we know is a big program here in the district. And also in orange, the lighter orange is your available classroom, which are either used for storage or miscellaneous uses. In that column E, that's where we add up all the classrooms themselves. The district has 385 total classrooms at the K4 level, including Webster and E.G. Room. We look at it, you see a highlighted red, that's your fall count in 2015. I know as Superintendent Okus said, this is the committee, this is what was presented in the committee, we started this back in the April-May timeframe, to really understand what is that fall count. We also looked at, what's the building capacity? And this is key, because we're not considering every single classroom in that building. So, to give you an example, column, building capacity, you'll see it's missing column E, which is, we're protecting those from an academic standpoint. So, knowing that we're going to artificially take 15, 20% of those classrooms off the equation. So, you see the utilization of, let's say, 62% or even when we go into the academic analysis, we're only looking at those classrooms that are used for general education only. And so, I guess the easiest way is, if you picked on the cannon, you've got 29 classrooms. If you said 26 kids at the K level, 27 at, 28 at the 1 through 3, really the capacity's well over 458. But, again, we're looking at it from an academic standpoint. So, at the K4 level, again, looking at through Plant Moran Cressa's facility audit, the average was 62%. Again, you're going to see that change a little bit when, when Steve and Jen kind of go through their academic review. So, we did this, and again, we spent a lot of time actually looking at floor plans of each of the individual buildings at the K4 level. On the next slide, we broke it down from the upper elementary, middle school, and high school levels. And, again, same exercise, we added up the blue, the green, the dark orange, the light orange. And we're looking at capacities. And so, again, you're just over 2,800 student capacity availability at the K4 level, 880 at the upper elementary, 506 at the middle school, 1,358 at the high school. So, again, upper elementary averages roughly 60, 70%, 81% at the middle school, and at the high school, you're at 78%. So, the state average, you want to be at 85% is kind of your target goal. And, again, that's going to be of your general education classrooms. We'll dive a little bit of that when we get to the floor plans and give you some of the update and analysis going forward. We also looked at some of the support buildings. So, for instance, Jackson, we looked at the K program there. We liked that options of expanding it, either another facility or taking a look at expanding on site. The Career Technical Center, which we're here today, and also the West Wayne Skill Center. So, again, looking at those facilities from a total classroom count, as well as the breakdowns of those specials going forward. So, again, the two parts we talked about were the enrollment demographics and also the facility utilization. Then, of course, I went to the budget format. This is an alternative review.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. As Superintendent Okus mentioned, the wide portion of this has to do with bond planning. But it's important to point out and review this information from 2015, because any recommendation that goes forward or is acted on definitely has general fund implications which need to be considered. In 2015, you may remember that the Board held community forums, and the administration and the Board received feedback on the community that aided us in our budget decision-making. Items that the staff and the community were most interested in preserving at that time were current K6 class size, maintaining the elementary support teachers, K6, maintaining extracurricular activities for students, and maintaining the special and magnet programs and opportunities for students. So, again, those were the things that the community and staff were most interested in preserving. The four items that the staff and community were most interested in implementing and ordered to preserve those items are listed here. First one being selling vacant property, and as the Board knows, that's something that we have done. To increase the out-of-district schools of choice, and again, something that we've done the last few years. To increase the pay-to-participate fees, that's something that was implemented this past fall, and to close a K4 elementary school. Again, the overwhelming message from staff and from the community during those forums was to support, to implement the things just listed in order to preserve, again, class size, support to students, extracurricular activities, and the many unique magnet programs that we offer in the district. The District Enrollment and Utilization Committee, this group was brought together as a broad-based stakeholder team representing each school in our district to review and analyze the district enrollment and facility studies completed by Plant Moran Cressa. And this was in order to help, to make recommendations to help safeguard and conserve our district's resources. This was a 40-plus-member committee. There was representation from each school in the district. Several schools had multiple representatives. The broad range of stakeholders included administrators, teachers, secretaries, building supervisors, operation staff, Board members, parents, and community members at large. That broad base allowed us to get many valuable perspectives and insight during this process. We met frequently, I believe it was somewhere around 12 times, between April of this year and early November. The committee objectives. We were to explore and recommend options to the Board and the superintendent that increased our facility utilization of our elementary schools, moving towards the goal of 80%. Again, you heard Mr. Wills say just a moment ago, 85%. We set the goal of 80%. Any recommendation that for possible expansion or consolidation of facilities had to include rationale and the potential impact, be it human, financial, community, and facility, for each of our options. Committee spent a great deal of time discussing those aspects and the impact. Evaluate the facility needs and the impact to assist with the planning for Phase Four and Phase Five of our bond. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, to determine if all the schools and non-K-12 facilities will be needed in the foreseeable future and therefore need to be renovated. We also looked at the current operating locations for all of our programs pre-K through post-secondary to help determine if there are more optimal options or locations that exist within our district. We also, in addition to the objectives, had several parameters. As Superintendent Okus mentioned, the shared vision and collective commitment guided our work. Any of the recommendations for changes to the district's structure or programs had to accomplish one or both of the following: to enhance opportunities for students and to maintain and safeguard the resources of the district. The committee was, parameter was charged with preserving the triads, so that would not be disrupted, and the committee was charged with preserving the current grade configurations. And lastly, the district understands the value of student-parent and staff relationships, and therefore, any recommendation for closure would not separate any school community into more than two or three groups. Mr. Centers.
For those of people that are not aware, what are, what are the triads and why is that important?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. The triads, we have three triads in the district, Churchill Triad, so then that is the middle school, the 5-6 school, and the K4 schools that feed up into Churchill. And the district is divided up into three triads, those feeding Churchill, those feeding Franklin, and those feeding Stevenson. Mr. Wills?
Thanks, Steve. As mentioned, when we started kicking off these meetings, we actually have a orange ring binder that was distributed electronically as well. We looked at, one of those things that are in the K4 support buildings, because, again, these are the ones that are really focusing on the bond dollars themselves. We looked at the age of the facility. One of the things you'll find is that the owner of the facility, traditionally the smaller the school and the less classrooms. We looked at things such as the site. So, what would some of the challenges be potentially if you were to expand programs? Or, again, increasing that student... Or again, increasing that student population at certain enrollments relative to the facility sites. Cost of future improvement, not just in the bond, what are the next 15 or 20 years look like relative to capital? So it would be a sinking fund or potential general fund dollars for each of the facilities. We looked at the current utilization, again, holistically at all 30-plus buildings going forward. We looked at the projected enrollment, so again, not just K-12, but really drilling down to each individual K4, every upper elementary school, every middle school, every high school. Traditionally, our meetings lasted two and a half to three hours, and so, again, a lot of the detail went through that relative to their, the demographics and enrollment. We also spent a significant amount of time on impact of boundaries. So again, with the goal of minimizing the impact of two or three potential schools, we looked at operating costs for the facility, not just the maintenance, the utilities, custodial, but also the installation costs. What are some of those impacts to the Lavonia Public School programs? So again, how do you enhance those programs or potentially provide a better learning environment for those programs from what they're currently in? We also looked at, again, as Steve mentioned, maintaining that triad, but also taking a look at potentially maintaining growing programs holistically going across. So again, taking a look at utilization report on the next slide. A lot of people don't realize, but at 3.1 million square feet, you're the largest landowner and facility operator in LaVonia. So with that comes operational dollars. So on average, it's $2 to $3 to operate facilities, so at $3 million, you can imagine that, that's probably your second largest expense on your books behind the staff costs. So again, it's a huge impact to the operating funds. But 34 total facilities, so 13 elementarys, six upper middle schools, upper elementary and middle school facilities, three high schools, and then the support facilities. And as I mentioned earlier, the average age of the facility is over 50 years old, which again, kind of upkeels back to that 1958 population explosion. The graph on the right does show kind of the boundaries at the elementary level, again, looking at those even in further details going throughout our work here. So again, taking a look at the age of the facilities, so on the right-hand side, you'll see the name of the elementary school, the age, and then the square footage. On the lower right-hand side, you'll see at the upper elementary school, along with the middle school. So again, right there is just a million square feet of space. On the next slide, you'll see the high schools, which is also over a million, and then the support facilities, the ancillary facilities are 680,000 square feet. So again, at 3.1 million square feet, part of the charge is, how do you operate more efficiently given that 1,600 student decline? So as any business would do, if you had a 10% reduction in revenue, what would you look at from a facility standpoint, still preserving your product? In this case, how do you preserve programs and educating students going forward? On the next slide, we spent a significant amount of time looking at the proposed bond work for each of the elementary schools in totality. Here, we've actually highlighted before that were not renovated yet, so we can kind of see the construction totals for Buchanan and Cass, and also Garfield and Webster Title. On the next slide, same exercise at other facilities, which would be the Career Tech Center, Jackson Center, Perrinville, which we know was 1916, Ford Skill Center, the admin, and then of course, just totally not the 195 million dollar bond. So really looking in totality of how do you utilize those bond dollars in the best fashion going forward. On the next slide, again, I mentioned drilling down to the details, so again, taking a look at the proposed bond scope, we actually drilled down to look at how many students would currently be impacted within each section of the city. So literally we drilled down to each square mile, and again, one of the benefits that LaVonia Schools does have is you have the transportation software, which takes all 14,000 average students, plots them on a nice map, and we can drill down to the details to show, here's 26 students, or 10 students, 27 students going forward. On the next slide, we start to take a look at, same exercise, looking at what is the impact again to current boundaries, feeder patterns to various schools. To really have a committee think out loud of, can you move all those students to one potential facility? Sure. What does that do to utilization? What does that do to programming? What does it do to demographics? What does it do to transportation costs? So a lot of the factors went into these analysis that we went through really the last six to eight months going forward. As Steve mentioned, keeping you informed, again, the presentations, the board meetings, the board updates, the earlier community forums in the June timeframe, observer newspaper articles. So again, a lot of communication, I know it's tougher districts because sometimes maybe, well, I didn't know about this. I know there's a district webpage, there's a click to the presentations. So again, keep you informed, I think the district's done a really nice job from an outside perspective of having community forums, such as, taking your time. We worked with some districts that did this in three months, and others, a little more methodical, which is good because you do want to take a look at it from an academic standpoint, which is, I'm going to transition to the presentation next.
We're going to review a more current version of a slide that Mr. Wills reviewed on page 20, but just to review for you again, because this is an important slide, to make sure that you understand the details. The blue section is the instructional and general education classrooms. The green spaces are those that are protected, such as a music room, an art room, a community lab, all used for instructional space, but they are not factored in, used when determining a building's capacity. And then the next column is the potential available classrooms. These are classroom-sized spaces that are not currently being used for regular instruction. And then those available classrooms that may be vacant or storage. It's the blue, the orange, and what I'll call the pumpkin, we've been struggling to find the right color, pumpkin columns that are used to determine a building's capacity. We are not looking to fill these rooms up to the contracted maximums. The classroom sizes that were used in determining these capacities is based on the current desirable class size in LaVonia, and you can see that listed there in the box. We, when we looked, this fall, we went through and we looked at all of our K4 facilities with what we call the LaVonia Eye, much more protective or conservative, much less aggressive than Plant Moran Cressa was when they looked at it. They had many more classrooms identified as potential or available classrooms to be used, and we put more columns, more classrooms into that protected category to make sure that we had a protected classroom for music, for art, for the lounge were appropriate, and for SAC. So again, those, we went through and looked at each and every one of, and walked each and every one of our buildings. With that, when you increase the protected number of classrooms, you decrease the capacity in a particular building, therefore, you increase the utilization without much else changing. So if you just took and looked back at the graph on page 20, the utilization from Plant Moran Cressa was around 62%. By looking at it with the LaVonia Eye, by also then updating the enrollment data from October 15 to October of 16, and then we also removed two schools from this slide because we felt they negatively skewed the average. We removed Nigirro because that's a small magnet program. The utilization in that building was, I believe, around 32%, which was an outlier. And also Webster, half of those classrooms, which are, that make up the MOCHI program, are staffed much differently than our traditional classrooms. So for those reasons, those two buildings were taken off of this chart because we feel they brought the utilization down and maybe inaccurate reflection of what the utilization is. So again, when you use the October 16 enrollment data, when you look at this with the LaVonia Eye, and when we remove Nigirro and Webster, you can see the utilization currently in our K4 buildings is 74%. And then if you look to the right, the green bar, the part that's highlighted in the green, based on the projections enrollment from Plant Moran Cressa, this utilization average would go to 70% in 2019 and 2021. We also did the exact same thing, if you're looking at our upper elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools. I'll simply point out here, one of the questions that we've received throughout this process is, why are we looking, or are we looking at closing a 5-6, a 7-8, or a high school? Looking at the numbers, there's no way to close one of those buildings at any level and move three into two. Mathematically, it won't fit. So we took that off the table very quickly. The committee process, in addition to in-depth reviews of the utilization and the enrollment studies, we did an entire overview of the LPS facility portfolio, again, over multiple meetings, and we did a deeper dive into the non-renovated schools and support buildings. As I mentioned earlier, all of the information was reviewed in relation to the human, the financial, the facility, and the community impact. The review of the analysis resulted in eight possible considerations, all of which met the committee objectives and parameters. And from there, the committee performed a detailed analysis of those eight possible considerations, again, based on the objectives and parameters and guidelines that we had set out. After identifying those eight possible considerations, each committee member worked independently and anonymously to rank the eight considerations, along with rationale, either for or against a particular consideration. That process resulted in the committee moving forward to the board proposals that will be presented tonight, which had the majority's support amongst the committee. So of those eight considerations, four did not receive support, majority's support to move forward, and four did, and so we will present those four to you tonight. A very, very quick overview, because we spent a great deal of time talking about the facilities that are listed on the screen, but as to why any considerations here may not be moving forward. One was the LaVonia Career Technical Center, which is the building that we're at, which I believe is a converted elementary school. There is not enough room currently in any one of our high schools to house this program in one place. So in order to move the Career Center, we would need to divide it up into two or three pieces and relocate it to our three high schools. In addition, none of our schools, none of our three high schools are equipped to handle the automotive program as it is equipped here, or the building trades or home construction programs. So again, the committee felt that this current location, with its limitations, is still the most optimal location for the LaVonia Career Technical Center. We looked at Nigirro and the possibility of moving the Japanese immersion school into one of our other buildings. The major roadblocks there were the logistics. Nigirro follows a different yearly calendar and a different daily schedule than our other K4 schools. There was also concern of the committee that by moving it into another location and operating two independent schools in a single building would cause that unique program to lose some of its identity. The Buchanan Elementary School, we looked at that, that's another non-renovated K4 building. There have been previous renovations, or renovations done previously to that building. So by comparison, there are minimal bond dollars allocated in the current bond for that building. It's our only air-conditioned building, and it houses our summer SAC program. So those are three of the key reasons as to why there were no considerations moving forward for Buchanan.
HX and Early Childhood Center houses our early childhood special education programs as well as our fee-based preschool and childcare programs. The committee spent a lot of time talking about those programs in relation to how could we grow our fee-based program. We spoke about potentially reopening the Dickinson Center and creating an early childhood center for our youngest students in LaVonia Public Schools. Due to the cost of renovating of over $100,000 building, although we may look at that in the future, it was not a consideration that we were moving forward to the board this evening. Webster Elementary School is a unique school in that it houses two completely separate schools, but they identify as one. You have the Gifted and Talented Program in one part of the building, and you have the County Program, which is the moderately cognitively impaired program, along with students with autism in that program. Those two programs share, again, a unique identity as one and share peer supports amongst the classrooms in that building. We did look at separating those two, however, there was not one building that could accept each of those programs in and of themselves due to the large population. The Western Wayne Skill Center is an 18 to 26-year-old young adult program for our students with moderate cognitive impairments as well as our students with autism. It is also the only two-story facility in the district. The second floor houses the shared time as well as adult education programs as well as our students with autism. We did consider and have lots of committee discussion on the Western Wayne Skill Center due to that facility, again, being a two-story facility, housing some of our most significantly impaired students. We looked at relocating that program into Dickinson Center and relocating that program into other facilities within LaVonia Public Schools, and that was one of the considerations that we will be talking about here in some upcoming slides for you. Cass Elementary and Garfield Elementary are two non-renovated K4 buildings that we will also be discussing with you in upcoming slides.
On slide 45, we talked about the anonymous individual review done by the committee members with respect to the eight considerations that we had at that time. This is a snapshot of that sheet, and you'll see there, each committee member at the time had all of their information with them with respect to each consideration, and they were asked to review that consideration with respect to the committee objectives. They were asked to review that consideration with respect to the committee parameters. Then they were asked to list, and I promise, we provided them more space than is indicated here, they were asked to list their rationale, either for or against a particular consideration, and then asked to rank them 1 through 8. And each committee member did that, and we tallied the results, and it's those results that will lead us to the recommendations that we're going to share here shortly.
So again, the committee spent a large amount of time talking about the Western Wayne Skill Center program, which is a county-run program that we facilitate here at LaVonia Public Schools. The Western Wayne Skill Center, again, has two unique populations in there, our moderately cognitively impaired program as well as our young adult program for students with autism. The recommendations that came out of the committee were, looked at, included moving the Western Wayne Skill Center into a closed building, Perrinville, relocating the Western Wayne Skill Center into C-Hall, located across the street here at Churchill High School, and then depended on other considerations before the board, looking at relocating the Skill Center into Cass or into Garfield. The committee decided that the Skill Center should be part of any recommendation moving forward, so that is why you will not see the Western Wayne Skill Center listed separately. So when you look at this slide, you will see the bond budget that was allocated for the Western Wayne Skill Center. So in all of the considerations for where the Skill Center could be relocated, we would utilize the 1.3 million dollars of the bond budget allocated to make the renovations and updates at the new location. The Skill Center has an approximate savings of 7.9 million dollars in sinking funds, and sinking funds are used for non-bond-related items such as roofs, parking lots, maintenance, boilers, et cetera. Approximate operational savings, moving into Churchill, Cass, or Garfield would be approximately $50,000, and that would be the savings in the utilities at the actual building site of the Western Wayne Skill Center. And if we relocated the Western Wayne Skill Center into Perrinville, you will see that there are no operational savings as that building is currently offline. Transportation costs, again, excuse me, the Western Wayne Skill Center is a county-run program, so the majority of the program, so the majority of the transportation costs are covered through aid team funds. And the one-time expense, according to Plant, Moran, Cressa, in moving a building is approximately The next slides that you see are considerations for non-renovated K-4 facilities for fall 2017, and each consideration is independent of other considerations, and no decisions have been made at this time.
The consideration for no changes, through our work and discussions with the committee, it was very evident that the committee did not support a recommendation that would involve making no changes. The community implications for no changes would be that the neighborhood schools would remain, that the district may need to consider redrawing boundary lines to better balance enrollment disparity and increase operational efficiencies in the future. And the district may need to consider closing a renovated school in the future. Financial implications, the bond dollars, the operational costs, and potential sinking fund savings would not be realized. The loss of 1,600 students since 2010, as Mr. Will referenced earlier, is still a financial hole confronting the district. The human implication, that no families or school communities are impacted by closings or relocations. It may impact long-term programs and opportunities for students. Facility-wise, there's a large disparity in building utilization from one building to the next, currently ranges from 48% to 89%. Six of our buildings, K-4 schools, would remain below 74% utilization. The district average of K-4 would remain at 74% utilization. The remaining facilities will be, would be renovated with the allocated capital funds in the summer of 2018, and, again, these are renovations or investments intended to be for 15 to 20 years. On slide 53, this is simply the enrollment utilization, if there are no changes made. In yellow, those are the center-based programs, so you can see what the overall enrollment in those buildings are, although those are not factored into the utilization. You'll see here, with no changes, the current utilization is at 74%, projected to go to 70% in 2021.
Excuse me, Mr. Ashwell?
Yes.
Can you explain why the special education classrooms are not factored into the enrollment?
Yes, I will. The center programs typically come at a much smaller enrollment than a traditional classroom, therefore, we have accounted for them in each building, but so not to, as an outlier to that average, we've removed them from the calculation. They're counted in the population, not in the overall building utilization, those classrooms. This slide shows the bond dollars that are currently budgeted, the anticipated sinking funds, and the totals for both Cass and Garfield, totaling $12 million, $12.8 million.
The next section of slides you will see will be repeated over four considerations brought forward by the committee to the board this evening. I will be going over in great detail the first consideration, and then you will see that it repeats itself as we get into consideration two, three, and four. So the first consideration brought forward to the board from the committee is Cass General Education, moving into Buchanan, and Garfield relocating into Kennedy and Randolph. This slide describes how the potential changes are able to take place and necessary relocation of programs. Cass Center would move to Randolph. The Young Fives program would move to Hays. Buchanan Center would move to Grant, and Cass Center and Buchanan Center are special education programs that are part of the continuum of programs and services offered by Livonia Public Schools. Again, so Buchanan Center would move to Grant. Talk It Up is a preschool speech support program currently located in two full-size classrooms at Grant, and they would be relocated within the building. Cass General Education, including School of Choice, would move into Buchanan. The Visual Impairment Program, which is currently one classroom and housed at Kennedy, and Under the Rainbow, which is a preschool, also currently housed at Kennedy, would be relocated. The Visually Impaired Classroom would move to Hoover, and Under the Rainbow Preschool would move to Cleveland. Garfield, the majority of Garfield would move into Randolph, and a smaller portion would move into Kennedy. This slide indicates all of the classroom space that would need to be repurposed for the relocation of Cass into Buchanan, and Garfield into Kennedy and Randolph, and the relocation of the centers. So, again, I'll go through this in great detail for this first consideration, and then you'll see it repeats itself. So Grant would need to repurpose three vacant classrooms, one leveled library, one special education resource classroom, and one motor room, as well as relocating the two full-size classrooms for Talk It Up within Grant for the eight classrooms of Buchanan Center. Randolph would need to repurpose five vacant classrooms, one resource program classroom for Cass Center. Hays would repurpose one vacant, one leveled library, one Title I classroom to receive the three Young Fives classrooms. Buchanan would therefore then repurpose the eight center classrooms, one elementary support teacher classroom, one English language learner's classroom, for 10 general ed classrooms. And then we would take one resource classroom to create an additional SAC classroom. Randolph on the other side, under Garfield, would also repurpose three PTA rooms, two SAC rooms, and the three Young Fives classrooms that moved to create room for the eight Garfield classrooms. SAC would need to be relocated into a general area, including the gym and cafeteria. Kennedy would repurpose the one classroom for the visually impaired program and the two preschool programs to create three full-size classrooms for Garfield, and would repurpose one resource classroom for an additional SAC. Hoover would receive the visually impaired program and repurpose one vacant classroom for that. Cleveland would repurpose one leveled library, one English language learner classroom in order to receive the Under the Rainbow Preschool. The Great Start Readiness Program is currently housed at Garfield Elementary and would need to be redistributed to two buildings in the district, and those buildings have yet to be determined. In regard to the Talk It Up Speech Program, those services would continue to be provided at Grant, located in the building.
Just for clarification, any of those items that are identified to be repurposed, those particular functions or operations would continue to occur within the building. It just will be necessary, they would be recurring in a room, you know, a classroom-sized space, they'll be relocated and occur elsewhere in the building. There aren't any services being eliminated, just relocated within the building.
This is a Google overhead map view of the change in boundaries for current Garfield students, and which neighborhoods and communities would be relocated to Randolph and Kennedy. It's difficult to tell the different shades and colors up on the screen, so I apologize for that, but the brighter yellow sections would go to Kennedy, and the grayer yellow, if you will, those neighborhoods and communities would go to Randolph. The next, this section right here, you will see highlighted in yellow are the impacted buildings. So, for example, Buchanan went from 375 students to 569 students, looking at 96% building utilization, again, looking at utilization of instructional classrooms. Cleveland goes from 473 to 493 at 84% utilization. Grant currently at 464, accepting a center program, goes to 529, goes to 92% utilization. Hays, 394, would go up to 494 with the Young Fives program, at 73% utilization. Hoover, accepting the visually impaired program, would go from 460 to 466 at 77% utilization. Kennedy would go from 350 to 440 at 92% utilization. Randolph would go from 250 to 487 at 85% utilization, for an overall average building utilization at 83%. And, again, if you look at projected out, our enrollment in 2019 would be 80%, and in 2021 would be at 79% utilization.
Should I think it'd be important real quick in that slide right there back. It's important because those percentages do not include column figures, like 96 total classrooms. So when you see a 96% or a 92%, keep in mind, at those schools, you're still roughly 25 to 30% of those classrooms are reserved, and those specialty-type classrooms. So, again, people hear, 95% or 100%, it's really on those general education. So out of the total, 280 total classrooms, the district is preserving 96 of those for those specialty-type programs, the SAC rooms, the computer rooms, yard rooms, the music rooms, et cetera, so those are not included. So even though it's a higher percentage, you're still saving or preserving those 96 total classrooms at the K-4 level.
Thank you. The next slide you are going to see are building level maps. You will not see these listed in handouts or posted on the website for security purposes. So the first map that you will see, again, goes back to what Mr. Archibald said when Livonia Public Schools did our walk-through of the buildings with our academic eye, as Mr. Will said, and protected additional classrooms. So we walked every single map, so you can see where the current location of classrooms are. General education classrooms are denoted in the blue color, and our special education local center classrooms are denoted in the yellow color. So this is what Buchanan looks like currently, and if the consideration went through, this is what the new building map would look like, noting that the rooms marked are to indicate utilization and may not reflect the actual placement of these classrooms. This is a current building map of Randolph. The two yellow-coloreds at the bottom are the Young Fives, and then their childcare classroom is up in the bottom right-hand side, right there. So Randolph accepting Garfield and a center. Thank you. The building would look like this. Again, the yellow would be the local center program. Kennedy, you can see in the upper right, has the Under the Rainbow, and then right below that would be the Visually Impaired Classroom, and then the next slide would be Kennedy with three Garfield classes, so you can see how we would repurpose those. Grant currently, and Steve, goodbye. These two classrooms right here are the preschool Talk It Up, the preschool speech program, where parents bring in their students for a few hours, a few days a week for early intervention for speech. So we would take these full-size classrooms and relocate them into this space here in the middle of the building. So, again, this is Grant currently, and then Grant with Buchanan Center. So, again, consideration number one, if Cass General Education moves into Buchanan and Garfield moves into Kennedy and Randolph, if you look at the one-time bond savings, it would be 7.4 million. Anticipated sinking fund savings, again, these would be the ongoing maintenance for Cass and Garfield that we would take into savings would be 5.4 million. Operational savings are building-specific personnel, along with utilities, so, for example, administration secretaries would be a savings of $800,000. Additional transportation costs, we would incur costs with this, with the increase in transportation, if we were to transport our Garfield students to Kennedy and Randolph. This would include adding approximately two runs, which includes adding buses and drivers to these areas, and then changing routes, which increases staff time on the bus. And then, again, a one-time moving expense of $25,000 per building, equalling $50,000. So, again, the committee looked at the impact on the human impact, as well as the financial impact. The human impact, Cass and Garfield families, current grades kindergarten through third grade will change schools. Buchanan, Kennedy, and Randolph accept new families into school. Center programs remain intact but relocate. Garfield students have an average increase in transportation from 25 to 35 minutes currently to 45 to 50 minutes one-way. Current Churchill High School triad average for K-4 is 35 to 40 minutes. Cass students have an average increase in transportation from 15 to 20 minutes currently to 25 to 30 minutes one-way. The current Stevenson triad average is 23 minutes. Staff will be reassigned primarily to follow the students. Randolph would be eligible for Title I support services, targeted, not school-wide, and class size will not be negatively impacted. Again, on the right-hand side is a summary of the financial savings and the costs that I went over in the previous slide. The other two impacts that the committee focused on were the community impacts and the facility impacts. Under community, seven communities are impacted by school closings. Students and their families remain in their triad. Cass General Education community relocates together. Boundary lines for Garfield change, with the majority staying together at Randolph. There may be some SAC needs, increases in SAC needs, and intra-district School of Choice remains per district policy. Under facility, three schools at or below 74% utilization, with an overall average utilization of 84%, and, again, this was noted on the slide with the yellow highlights. And it still protects classrooms, such as art, music, SAC, teacher lounge, computer labs. Mr. Archibald? Thank you. Consideration number two, Cass General Education moves into Buchanan and Hoover, Cass Center moves into Randolph, Garfield moves into Kennedy and Randolph. So you will start to see of So you will start to see a familiar process as we go through consideration number two. So again, under consideration number two, CAS center would move to Randolph. Buchanan Center would move to Grant. And we would split CAS into Buchanan. This includes school of choice and Hoover. Garfield remains the same with the exact same relocation of students into Kennedy and Randolph. The facility implications, again, are pretty much the same with Hoover, however. If you go down four bullet points on the left, Hoover would repurpose one vacant classroom, one elementary support teacher classroom, for two CAS general education classrooms, and then repurpose one classroom for additional SAC. Hoover in this instance would still receive the VI, the visually impaired program. This is the Google Map overhead view of the boundary that would relocate CAS partially into Hoover, with the majority going into Buchanan. This next slide, again, the yellow highlights the impacted buildings and are identical to consideration number one, with the exception of Hoover now receiving approximately 60 CAS students. So you'll see Hoover will be at 525, with the visually impaired program going up to 93% utilization. On average, we're at 86% utilization, and projected out to 2019 would be at 82% utilization, and 2021 at 81% utilization. Again, our building map's now taken into consideration if those changes were to occur. You've seen this before, so this is what Buchanan looks like now, again, with the yellow as the local center. So we repurposed those classrooms for eight CAS general education classrooms. You can see they just replace each other. Hoover currently. And then Hoover with two CAS general ed along with the visually impaired program. Then we have Randolph with Young Fives, and then Randolph with the eight Garfield classes and CAS center. Again, these slides are repeating themselves because that consideration did not change. Grant currently. And then Grant with Buchanan Center. Kennedy currently. And then Kennedy with the three Garfield classes. For this consideration, again, you will see the same dollar amounts here because we would be looking at CAS and Garfield. So you would have the same bond savings at 7.4 million, the same anticipated sinking fund savings at 5.4 million, the operational savings of 800,000. The transportation cost would be approximately 57,000 for the additional routes and runs, and then the one-time expense of moving the CAS and Garfield schools at 50,000. Again, the committee looked at the impact of this consideration. Under human, again, CAS and Garfield current grades K through three would change schools. Buchanan, Hoover, Kennedy, and Randolph would accept new families into school. The center programs remain intact but relocate. The same transportation impact statements are there for both the Garfield students as well as the CAS students. The staff will be reassigned primarily to follow the students. Randolph is eligible for Title I support services, targeted, not school-wide, and class size will not negatively be, will not be negatively impacted. And then on the right is just a summary of the financial savings and costs I went over in the previous slide. The community impact, seven communities are impacted. Again, the majority of CAS general education community remains together. CAS, some boundaries are redistributed, keeping major neighborhoods and communities together as much as possible, and using natural boundaries to make up those new lines. Garfield, some boundaries are redistributed, keeping neighborhoods in large areas together. Again, there may be an increase in SAC needs. Students and their families remain within their current triad, and intra-district school of choice remains per district policy. And again, the facility is just another summary of the previous slide. If this change were to occur, the average utilization would be at 86%.
Before we get to consideration three, I just want to remind everyone and point out that when we talk about repurposing a particular space, whether it's a resource room or an ELL room or whatnot, if a particular recommendation is accepted by the board, and we would then sit down with the building principal and the school staff, there may be another classroom-sized space that they would rather us use for a particular purpose than the space that we've designated here. So please know that those conversations will occur should a recommendation be adopted and moved forward. Consideration three is very similar to consideration one, with the exception that it only involves CAS, does not include Garfield. So this is with the CAS gen ed moving into Buchanan and the CAS center moving to Grant. Again, the CAS center moves to Grant. The Buchanan Center moves to Randolph. And all of CAS general education moves into Buchanan. The facility implications are the same for CAS as were viewed in consideration one. The CAS center, Buchanan Center, goes to Randolph because that is the larger of the centers. And then the CAS center would go into Grant. And there at Grant, they repurpose two storage rooms and the one-level library, one motor room. The two Talk It Up are relocated within the building for a total of six classrooms for the CAS center. The utilization, you can see there highlighted in yellow, the three school communities that are impacted by consideration three. The overall building utilization, K4, would be at 81% based on the current enrollment. Projected to go out to 77, or down to 77% in 2021. Again, the maps, you've seen these before. This is Buchanan current. Buchanan with 10 CAS gen ed classrooms. Randolph current. And Randolph with Buchanan Center and Young Fives. With this consideration, the $3.7 million in bond savings to be reallocated, $2.4 million, roughly $2.5 million in anticipated sinking fund, operational savings of $400,000, annual additional transportation costs of $15,000, and one-time moving expenses of $25,000. The human impact, CAS families, current grades K through three would change schools. Buchanan, Grant, and Randolph would accept new students and new families into the school. The center programs remain intact but relocate. Staff, again, are assigned, reassigned primarily to follow the students. And very important, class size will not be negatively impacted. On the far right of slide ID eight is the financial summary of the savings and the cost I alluded to just a moment ago. The community impact, there's three school communities impacted. CAS general education community relocates together. The CAS center community relocates together. Realize that SAC needs may increase. Students and their families remain in their current triad. And the intra-district schools of choice remains per district policy. And the facility there is just a summary of the utilizations of the buildings impacted. Consideration four is very similar to consideration two. Consideration four is CAS general education moving to Buchanan and Hoover, and CAS center moving to Grant. Again, the CAS center moves to Grant, the Buchanan Center moves to Randolph. A portion of the CAS gen education, general education moves to Buchanan, and a portion of the CAS general education moves to Hoover. You can see there the facility implications for this to occur. On the utilization slide, you can see now the four buildings highlighted in yellow that are impacted. The average K4 utilization is 81%. Projected to be 77% in 2021. And again, the maps, which you've seen before. Buchanan current. Buchanan with eight CAS general education classes. Hoover current. Hoover with two CAS general education classrooms. Grant current. Grant with CAS center. Randolph current. And Randolph with Buchanan Center and Young Fives. The financial implications with CAS moving into Buchanan and Hoover. Bond savings, $3.7 million to be reallocated. Anticipated sinking fund, $2.4 million. Operational savings, $400,000. Additional transportation costs, $15,000 annual. And one-time expenses, $25,000 for moving. The human implications, CAS families in grades K through three change schools. Buchanan, Grant, Hoover, and Randolph accept new families. Center programs remain intact but relocate. The increase in transportation from 15 to 20 minutes current to 25 to 30 minutes. Staff will be reassigned primarily to follow students. Class size, again, remains, will not be negatively impacted. On the far right is the summary of the financial implications on the previous slide. The community implications, the majority of the CAS general education community remains together. There was careful consideration to the boundary changes in order to keep neighborhoods and subdivisions and so forth together. The CAS center community remains together. SAC needs may increase. Students and their families remain in their current triad. Intra-district school of choice remains per district policy. And on the far-right side, again, is a summary of the utilization for those buildings. Our next steps, before I turn it over to Mr. Wills to provide a summary and a wrap-up. There are community forums to be held next week. The staff and community forums on November 29th. There is a community forum that is on the 29th, that is at Riley for the community. It starts at 7 o'clock. There will be a brief presentation at the outset, probably 15 to 20 minutes, and then break up into small groups for the community to share and answer some questions and provide their feedback to members of the board. On December 1st, there will be a community forum at Frost Middle School, and that will begin at 7 o'clock. Exact same format. We would encourage folks to attend one, again, either the 29th at Riley or December 1st at Frost. We will not turn anyone away if you happen to come to both. But in order to keep the group small enough so that they're able to, everyone is able to have an opportunity to speak with the board and have their voices heard, we would encourage folks to attend one of the forums as opposed to both. Our district enrollment utilization team will reconvene following the community forums to consider that input that is shared during those sessions. We'll make a final recommendation to the Board of Education that will come in the form of a single recommendation to the board on December 12th. You may know there is a committee of the whole meeting on December 5th. There'll be some question and answer during that session with the board. There will be no action taken at that meeting. The recommendation, again, will go to the board on December 12th to be voted on possibly, or voted on by the board on December 19th. Again, all that information is on our website, has been sent out in multiple email blasts. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Wills to wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. I know it's a lot of information, I know it's a lot of considerations. I know there's a lot of talking, discussion, deliberation. I just first and foremost want to thank the 40-plus committee for their time since April, again, looking at all this information, spending a significant amount of time, and just the candid conversations that we've had. This is actually a workroom, and this board was entirely filled out with considerations and impacts. These are not easy decisions. One thing I did want to point out is that we did do a kind of straw poll vote to do nothing option, and I think as Mr. Archibald mentioned, it was unanimous that something has to be done. Again, when Plant Row Crest looked at it from a facility audit, we look at it really more from the facility piece, from the academic piece. It's comforting to know that the district is preserving those classrooms. So again, roughly 118 classrooms are being preserved for those academic spaces. That still leaves you with a capacity of over 1,500 students with the projected enrollment going forward. You take a look at what's happened in education, so again, that decrease of roughly 1,600 students, again, it equates roughly $17 million to the population. And $470,000 they took away in 2011, that equates about $6.8 million. Although the enhancement village passed, which is great for the district, but unfortunately, you're still trying to play catch-up like Bolster, Sixhar, and Western Wayne County to fill these gaps with the deduction of 470, the decrease in enrollment going forward. We highlighted some of the other districts that have faced similar challenges in the actions that they've taken relative to looking at their operations efficiently, again, pushing more programmatic dollars to the classrooms. And I know Steve and Jen's spent a lot of time describing about not negatively impacting class sizes. So hopefully, when you take a look at those floor plans, you can look at the buildings that are going to be utilized. There's a comfort level, and even within the committee, yes, it may say 90, 95, 96%, but again, that is on the general education classrooms. With the savings of roughly 30% of classrooms being preserved for that. From the standpoint of next steps, as Steve and Jen mentioned, again, it's going to really be more information, but really listening to the community. We'll reconvene as the committee of the after-list forums, and also come back to the board with our, I guess, the final considerations recommendations. So at this point, I'd like to turn it back to Superintendent Quest or President Burton for any comments or questions.
Okay. Just a couple. Just a couple. There you go. Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. Just a couple of quick notes. We had talked about, Mr. Wilson talked about expanding our time zones. As you may recall, when we initially embarked on this in December of '15, we had anticipated bringing two recommendations at the end of the school year, in June. Some of the reasons why we wanted to wait through until this period of time were a few different reasons. One important factor was, quite frankly, the committee just didn't feel like their work was done. This is a very complex task, as you can see. This really summarizes the work of the committee. But again, on our website, each and every committee packet is updated, and you'll see how the committee worked through multiple, multiple considerations before coming to these. multiple considerations before coming to these. We realized in about early June, we would not be able to get to the point where we could comfortably give you enough time, not only to consider the recommendations, but also to hear back from our community. Another important element that I think we all wanted, with all due respect to Plant Maran Cressa, was we really wanted to see our fall enrollment. We really wanted to see where, would the numbers come in, how close were the projections for, that Plant Maran Cressa gave us, so that we would know going forward our confidence level in those projections as we look out. That was a very important factor. I want to make note and really just commend the folks in our district and the work that's been done to grow our enrollment. As you know, we've experienced a 300 to 400 student decline each year over the past number of years. Although we still did see a decline this year, it was mitigated considerably. We are down 73 total. That's a significant benefit to us, not only in the general fund, but also to continue to be able to have very accurate numbers with regard to utilization. Some of the things that we've done, and we had a separate student attraction and retention committee, as you know, over the past couple of years, that is not new. We have been working very hard to bring new students into the district. We offer some unique magnet programs to draw families in. Our Nijiiro Japanese Immersion Elementary School has grown in enrollment considerably. We also take in students to our ACAT and MACAT, which are Gifted and Talented Programs, as space permits once we take care of our own with OMI students. We also open our International Baccalaureate High School for out-of-district students. Additionally, the board allowed for some limited school of choice, out-of-district school and school of choice. All of those things, in addition to significant outreach by members of our district administration and our school administration, to reach out to private parochial and homeschool parents. We captured a number of new families into the district this year based on the efforts of personally reaching out to each of those families. So, we're very pleased to see that enrollment tide stem and to be able to be looking at a more stable enrollment. And you saw many graphs this evening that really illustrated the decline over the past number of years, but we see some stabilization going forward, which is a great thing for our district. We will not stop. We will continue to be relentless in our efforts to draw people to what we believe is just one of the finest school systems in the state. We believe we have a great deal to offer, and so we will not, regardless of where we move forward with any of these recommendations, we will not, we will not give up on that, those opportunities to bring new families, to continue to attract new families into our district. So, those were a couple pieces I wanted to mention with regard to the timeline, why we wanted to extend that out, and also some of the efforts to bring students into the district. President Burton?
Still on? Yes. Okay. Is it still on?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to thank everyone for attending this evening. I do not have anything to add at this point, other than to reiterate that this is one major piece of information for the Board of Education. Another major piece is hearing from the community. We encourage you strongly to attend the community forums. If you are not able to attend either of the community forums, to give your feedback to the Board of Education, because that is a valuable piece of information that we will have to take to our deliberations that will occur the following weeks. If you are not able to attend the community forums, if you can go on our website, you can submit your comments electronically. You can email them to the district, and all of those comments will come to the Board of Education in case you're unable to attend the community forums. We thank you very, very much for your attendance this evening, and we thank you for your attention to this matter over the past several months and for the following month as the Board of Education comes to a decision on this issue. We do not have any other items on our agenda this evening. We have the finance curriculum, building in-sight, legislative, policy, and personnel committees, all of which have no items underneath them. So, at this time, we are adjourned, and we do hope to see you in the coming weeks. Thank you for your attendance. Good evening.